Everybody, I hope everyone had a happy new year. Happy new year to those I haven't talked to. Holiday overall. Welcome to our work session. Our session in January in preparation for our Tuesday, January 11th board meeting. Mr. Bailey, you'll have the pledge and the invitation. We may have our presentation of colors back at this meeting, which would be nice. We'll turn it over to Dr. McMichael for the election of officers. We'll approve minutes. We'll approve the agenda. Review committee reports. Clean school, we're going to start with that again in January. Superintendent will have some recognitions next week. We may or may not have some visitors or requests appear for the board. That being said, superintendent report. We'll have Dr. Bain and his team from the first robotics. Dr. Green.
Yes, the communications report's there as usual. And I see Jenny's not here, so the student enrollment report was conducted on 12/9. And we're pretty much all in steady this year. So far, 14, 467.
Okay, any else? Ms. Houston, you're on the screen.
I'm here. I just have the invoices paid between $10,000 and $24,999. As of December 16th. Is that up on the screen yet?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so we have benchmark education and that was paid out of CARES funds for $19,723. That's for phonics and word study workshops for Winder Elementary School. The other one is Staples and that was paid out of CARES funds for $10,120.72. And that was the purchase of calculators, 73, and that was at the middle schools, AIM and BASSA. The last one is Dixie Construction and that was paid out of general fund for $19,527. And that was for sewer machine updates and that is district wide. And that's all I have for tonight. Any questions?
Jennifer, and you may not be able to answer this and that's okay, but why did we need 73 calculators?
We need much more than 73 calculators, but I think-
That's what I was thinking.
I think that's all we could get at the time. We're just trying to get our, I think, you know, when we were growing up, we had to buy our own calculators. Well, I don't think that's really what we're doing now. I think we're trying to help the students who can't get their own calculators.
Okay, so the next question is, are we just giving these to kids that need them? Or is this just, I'm still trying to wrap my hands around why we do 73 of these.
I can follow up with Tamara Bolden after this and we'll figure out why there was just 73. But I know she has a back order of more calculators coming.
Hello?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Jennifer, I'm going to ask you with answering that question.
Perfect.
Make sure that every child has access. Some parents still choose to buy their own.
Right.
But we like to make sure that every teacher, our goal is to make sure that every teacher has a class set. So if a kid gets their own calculator for one day, they still have access to it.
So these are only going to be used in the classroom?
Yes.
Okay, right, thank you. Thank you, Jennifer.
Anything else from Ms. Houston?
Yep, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Our report tonight will show you some pictures of progress at our new elementary school site. We made some headway there before Christmas and then not so much after Christmas. Guess the good news is we've got our ponds in place out there and soil erosion control measures in place. We have pictures of it, but we've got the pad for the pod unit in place out there. And it's got a cap of gravel on it, which was a blessing because again, that would have been a soupy mess. After all the rain we've had, so. We're doing well up there considering some of the weather we've run into and.
That's a lot of grass that's come out.
It had, yeah, because, you know, we had, we were in the seventies there before the holidays. So yeah, we're starting to see some of that. It's done come out and moved it there. Doing, doing well, plugging away at it. For the transportation shop, again, these pictures were taken in mid-December. I think the best pictures in this group are, are the the folks in the, in the conference room there, they had their Christmas party. They were able to, they got permission from the fire marshal to be in there and have a Christmas party. And a lot of folks show up and really enjoyed that. I was over there today and, you know, they're, they're getting furniture in place, you know, final cleaning and trim out and things like that, so. Hopefully any day now they'll, they'll be able to get fully moved in there, get our certificate from I C C. We're starting there. They've also, we have a picture of, but driving by there to get fuel today, they have the canopy. Which is going to be really nice, particularly on some of these cold, wet days to stay dry. But they've got that steel going up, so. Coming right along out there as well. That's it for our report tonight.
We'll tag on to that, that will have to do with Joe's part, but I'm sure was proud of our transportation department during the Christmas parade. The way they all showed up and showed out and what was the award they, they-
Mayor's Choice.
Mayor's Choice Award. Just want to publicly say how proud we all were of the way they represented us in the district, students and everybody else. They really did an amazing job. I'm really happy to see that.
Thank you, Joe. That shows a culture.
Absolutely. The Christmas decorations went right along with that.
All right, Dr. Moe?
Yes, one additional about my students about the calculators. If we have a student who cannot afford a calculator, we do have systems in place so those students can check that out. For the most part, we try to keep them within the class around, but we're not going to say no to the student who can't. And for the teaching and learning report, we are fortunate to have Dr. Brad Bolden, the director of special education. And his assistant director, this is Amy Wadley, here for presentation.
Good evening, everyone. We appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you. We just want to do a little bit of bragging on some programs that we've implemented. On our teachers and all those stakeholders involved with these programs. As Dr. Moe mentioned, Ms. Wadley is the assistant director of special education. And she handles a lot of our transition, a lot of our secondary programs, the middle and high school, and then also our transition programs. She's going to start off by talking to you a little bit about those programs and we appreciate the opportunity.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for having me today. For having us, rather. And we have the next slide for you. Thank you. So I'm going to talk about three of our transition programs that we have here in Barrow County. And I'm going to go in the order of their inception. So the very first one is the STEM program or the Student Transition Enrichment Program. Sorry, I keep wanting to look over there, but I have to look over there. So for the STEM program, that is a year-long program for our students who are over 18 that have significant cognitive disabilities. They are able to take direction. They are wanting to go into the workplace at some point in time when they finish school. But they need extra support in order to do that. So what we have, this program is located at Sims Academy. And it is partially taking place there where they work in the coffee shop, they work in the school store, they go into the cafeteria. They assist with other custodial duties. But then also three days a week when, you know, things are looking the way they should for COVID. Of course, they're able to go out to the community and get some hands-on work, experience it. Places like Walmart, Publix, Ingles, so on and so forth. So that's our very first program. And then the next one. Okay, so this one is our Youth Employment Services Program. And this is for our students who are current seniors, but they have room and their schedule to actually go to Sims Academy and have one class as an elective in the fall where Goodwill pushes in. And they work with them on a variety of work skills, soft skills, resume building, job interview skills. Just a whole variety of adult and independent learning skills for them. And then in the spring semester, if they have success in the fall, they're able to go into an internship where they are actually paid. And they earn credit for that. Once they have success in that particular course, they graduate in May. And then they're able to move forward into a full-time job after high school. So this is for a set of students that do not have any plans or intentions on going into a post-secondary training program or college. They just want to finish up school and head into work. And so this helps move them along in that direction. And then our final program that we want to present to you today is something we're very, very proud of. It's internationally known. It began at Cincinnati Children's Hospital and now it's here in Barrow County. This is called Barrow County, oh, sorry, Project Search Barrow. And this is at Chico's. So you know, the big old Chico's warehouse off of 316, you can't miss it. So that is where our program is taking place. This is also for students who have finished their graduation requirements. They have to be over 18 years old and they have to be willing to work and able to take direction. They have the opportunity to complete three different internships and they are 10 weeks long each. And they have a mentor on site. We have a teacher there who instructs them as well as a job skills trainer. And they move through these different sites. So the goal is to have them fully immersed, I guess you could say, in a workplace environment. So they're really a part of that culture and they're able to learn in a way that's very, very different than the classroom. They never set foot in the school building once they're a part of this program. And so they acquire these competitive, transferable skills. You know, they could eventually gain employment at Chico's, but these are all marketable and transferable skills that they could take any other place. And another thing unique about this program is that each student has an employment planning team that wraps themselves around those students and really follows them throughout the year to figure out what their skills are, their strengths, and where they still have some needs to get them placed when they are done with Project Search. So they get their diploma and then they also will have a job as well. So these are our three transition programs. Thank you.
Amy, are you seeing, the question, are you seeing more opportunities now with the workplace shortage? Are, are we able to expand the programs now?
Well, I do think, I hope that we will see that. Right now, it's sort of a wait and see because we have our kids still in process. So once, you know, they have a whole nother semester to complete. But I think in the next couple of months, we're, we should see an uptick in the ability to place these particular students. Yes.
That's also, Mr. Ritter, why we wanted to kind of present it tonight. It has a unique opportunity to really be a leading program in the nation. Chico's is the second largest, or is the large, second largest employer next to Barrow County School System in Barrow County. And we just need help promoting it and, and, you know, talking about it and being sure our community knows about it. And we're currently kind of launching a campaign to, to get more kids into that program and really working hard to do that. And the other reason too is we want to invite you, because you really had to see it. We're putting together a video, but we'd love for you guys to have an opportunity to go out and see these kids working in these jobs and with their mentors. And it's really, really neat. An added bonus, I think sometimes you get to shop at the store, the employee store there too. So I will try to organize that with the help of Dr. Grant Michael for y'all to have an opportunity to come see that. We'd really love for you to, so we're promoting it as an invitation. Then the other program I just wanted to tell you briefly about is our IMPACT program. Prior to the pandemic, we talked with executive cabinet about having students who come to us, whether they've transferred to us, whether they've come to us from a preschool setting or a pre-K setting or another district. And, and they get to school, we don't know much about them and they begin to engage in sometimes disruptive behaviors, aggressive behaviors. And we're trying to figure out kind of what's going on with them. And, and so we set out to, to find support for our K-5 schools who were working with these students. And what we came back to executive cabinet with was a program that was therapeutic in nature. And that was based in what we call applied behavior analysis. So we did a lot of work, went out and researched different programs. We researched all of the science of behavior and came back. And this year we have implemented that program. So I just wanted to tell you a little bit about that. Quickly, applied behavior analysis is the science of behavior. It's essentially the ABCs of behavior, their antecedents and their behavior and then their consequences. Sometimes those consequences can be positive, sometimes they can be negative. But that's essentially the science of behavior when you're trying to help students increase behaviors that are acceptable and then decrease behaviors that are harmful or that could affect learning. And so that's just kind of the basis of it. James, where am I supposed to put this?
Right here, Geneva, on range.
All right, thank you. So the scientists behind the behavior scientists are what's known as board-certified behavior analysts. We have two now in this district, Ms. Corey Williams and Dr. Christie Todecker. And so part of that planning process was to send them through this training that is, is very recognizable as sort of the gurus in behavior management and behavior analysis. And then we currently have four, what we call registered behavior technicians that work under our two board-certified behavior analysts. And so that's just so you know kind of who are the scientists behind this program.
There you go.
And so, it's, I'm not going to take too much of your time, but what, what happens is, see if I can read it from up here. So it's an additional level of support to students in grade K through five. And typically we're looking at kids in an RTI tier three model. Sometimes there can be a propensity, just generally in education, that you may automatically assume or one may automatically assume that this behavior is indicative of the child with a disability. And so that's not always the case. And so we really try to get down to what interventions can we provide that would help this student make appropriate choices or behave appropriately. And then also special education, what we're doing there is we're trying to go serve the student within the classroom. Instead of putting them out sort of in an alternative placement in elementary school, we don't know much about them. Helping them build skills to engage appropriately in school every day. And then with special education, we're trying to help them stay in the least restrictive environment, essentially at the end of the day. There's a social emotional learning component, that's what it's based on when we go to work with these kids. And so what these RBTs do under the direction of these BCBA's is they go in and work individually with students one-on-one every day. They're not parapros, they're not one-to-one parapros, but they are basically intervening, collecting data and trying to figure out what things we can do to help that child be successful within the classroom. And so some of the, the behaviors that are exhibited may seem like, so I'll show you the last slide. So they've worked with nine kids so far this year. That doesn't seem like a large number. However, when you have nine students who you're not familiar with or engaging in these types of behaviors, they're very disruptive to a school. And so we want to get their support now. Five of those have been tier three RTI students. And four of those have been students with disabilities across six of our elementary schools. Of all of those, they have remained in the classroom. One was referred for evaluation and did qualify and that student has been moved into a different setting. But basically, our principals at the elementary level really appreciate the support. We are very responsive to them. Our parents are pleased. Our teachers are thankful for the help in working with, with individual students while also trying to teach a whole classroom. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to, to plug that program because we're really proud of it. And we, and we really feel like it's doing great work. And so that pretty much sums up the transition programs that we wanted to tell you about as well as IMPACT. If there are any questions?
Oh, right, the IMPACT program, how long have y'all been, how long has it been viable?
So it started this fall, August.
So it's in its infancy, it's available.
Yes.
I just look forward to hearing more about and the results that you get from it. Because being in a school setting, sometimes when you see disruptive, one of these students complete for the whole office and yeah, I think, I think this is, that's a very positive beginning here, so.
Sometimes the work within the science of behavior though recommends four to 12 weeks, for instance, for this person to intervene, collect data, to do it the correct way to really see change. What we've seen using these RBTs is it's really not taking as long. It's taking four to six, max nine weeks. So we're already seeing things that we, you know, may want to adjust, but we're also seeing successes that we didn't anticipate happening as quickly as they're happening. So we're excited about it.
I'd just like to say a quick thanks to you guys and what you guys are doing. This is, I've been on the board for one year. And far and away, the, the most positive responses I've heard in the community, even surrounding communities, is the programs that you guys, anything or everybody else. But fantastic job, I really appreciate it. Look forward to, to doing a field trip and seeing these, these folks in action.
We'll, we'll work it. Thank you for, for your kind words.
Brad, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
This IMPACT situation, I know this is, this is the first year we've done this, but how do you see this expanding? How many, have you identified how many students can use these services, I guess is the question.
So, so far there have been nine. I think we could grow it if we find that it works, right? Over the long term. So if we see the data coming back that these kids are not necessarily progressing to need more support through specialization. Now, if they do, we're going to provide that support. We want to make sure they need that support.
Well, that was my next question is sometimes children get misdiagnosed because of behavior issues, which they have no control, for whatever reason. As a student with a disability, when I can see this program really helping them. So I'm hoping we can move some of these kids out of that classification and, and into a regular classroom setting where we don't have to worry about their behavior. That would be to me the ultimate goal of this program. Is that where you're headed?
Yes, that's the goal. Thank you for saying that, first of all. And second of all, that's where we'd like to go. And if it works, I mean, I would envision maybe asking for some more RBTs, I gotta say that.
Yeah, well, that was-
But, but we gotta say that it works, you know, and, and we're, we're busy trying to, trying to do that.
So do you think that at the end of this year, we'll be able to, at the end of the school year, we'll be able to actually get back and see some?
We'll, we'll have very, very specific numbers with specific students, obviously. We, we, I wouldn't mind summarizing that and sharing it with you guys.
That'd be great.
But yeah, we will, we will be able to show its effectiveness, hopefully, rather than this ineffectiveness. But we, we have all, we'll have, that's what they do. They collect data and lots of it to inform the intervention. So we'll have plenty of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Right, Amy, thank you so much. Appreciate what you guys do. Just thanks, anything, save it for later, okay? Hope we have any old business to discuss or clarify? New business, the affirmation of the strategic plan, system, vision, mission, and benefits.
Yeah, this is just our annual affirmations on number one, number two here for, for the board. Just on the strategic plan, which, which we just, just approved, but it just happened to fall that way. Mission, belief and all of those things. And then also the affirmation that we do annually for the policy BH, which is Board of Education Code of Ethics. So we just need to vote on those two things to approve them and move forward for the next year with them.
Consent agenda?
Yeah.
All right. Pearl, back to you.
Okay. So our first item is guaranteed maximum price for early release steel and roof package at new elementary school. Again, one of the benefits of our construction manager risk approach is that we can, we can release these different packages sort of as we move along, even as building design is still taking place. We did that with the early release grading package last spring. It allowed us to get, get a jumpstart on that. And so we'd like to do the same with the roofing and the steel. As you know, there's all sorts of material shortages and delivery issues and I know roofing in particular and steel. Those are two big ones there, so that's the purpose of this recommendation. We're recommending guaranteed maximum price of $4 million for steel and roof packages on the new elementary school project. This will be funded by SPLAS. Any questions? Well, my hat.
Consent agenda?
The second item is recommendation for guaranteed maximum price of $185,000 to allow a contractor to assist with the placement and installation of mobile units. This will be Charles Black Construction. They were approved as our construction manager last fall. And this will be for the single wide units, the eight new units that were approved, as well as six existing units that we have out at Westside. You know, if you recall, Grail Construction was approved to do that similar type of planning, coordination and installation work for the pod unit at BASSA. So this is just trying to help us keep up with growth and get these single wide units in place at multiple locations around the county.
Consent agenda?
Okay, I'm going to step in for Greg Webb here on this one. And we're asking the superintendent to recommend the purchase of 13 gas-fired water heaters with a cost not to exceed $191,000. Funds here would be CARES Act funds. And can I speak to, to this for a moment here about? We're actually recommending the second proposed price. $190,857, we rounded that up, for not to exceed a $191,000. The reason that we're asking for that is that an alternate water heater was proposed, a ream unit. We believe that that will be fine. It's just not the one we specified, but, but we checked that out and we're fine with it. So we, we feel like the price will be $170,000 or just over that. But we haven't worked with this vendor and they're from another state. And so we just kind of want to be careful that if we, if we release this and say, okay, you're approved, let's, let's move forward, that we don't hear, well, that's what we said a couple of weeks ago and can't get it to you in a week like we said we could. Just, we just don't, we're not familiar with these folks. We won't fall back, I guess is what I'm saying.
Just Ferguson, you're not familiar with?
No, it's a B and L, we're not. Ferguson is local and we've worked with them in the past. So we feel real comfortable with them if we had to go to that, that second in line. Hopefully, for the price and the delivery time, I think we don't have to do that.
Now, the B and L didn't give you the price for what you asked for.
Correct, but we, we have a stipulation of what we send out. It says, if you can provide an alternate, an alternate unit that gives us the same performance, meets all of those same features that the specified unit does, we'll review that. If we're okay with it, then we're okay to recommend that to our board. So that's what they did.
So you're planning on purchasing from the low bidder.
Correct.
Your fallback is the $190,000.
Correct.
Let me make it clear.
Okay, I, I'm going to, I bring this up about once every two years, so I just seem to do the time. Okay, I, I'm gonna, I bring this up about once every, oh, two years. So I just seems to be the time. Uh, we've worked with Ferguson before, right? They're a little bit higher than the, than the one that we haven't worked with, but they're also local as in Georgia, right? They're Georgia company.
Yes.
So why do we want to take a chance with somebody who's out of state that we haven't done business with for a little bit of money?
Mr. Stevens, you want to get me caught up in this low bid, local vendor thing, huh? Mr. Stevens, that, you know, that's at the pleasure of the board, obviously to, to, to get into that territory there. I think, um. You know, B and L provided a water unit that will meet our needs and it's at a lower cost. So I think that's our, our duty. To carry it forward that way, but.
Well, it, it is, and I appreciate that. I, I guess my, my concern is given supply chain issues that we're having right now. If B and L comes back and says, well. You know, we got the bid, but we can't deliver. And then we go back to Ferguson, um. What do you do if Ferguson says, well, now we can't either.
Well, Ferguson doesn't even have to know you're taking the bid because they will.
Right.
I think it's twofold. I think one, of course, the, the, the big draw there, one is three things. One is the low bid. Two, it's the three to five days if they can actually deliver. That's worth it.
At three to five days.
And three is not questionable.
Well.
This is federal funding too. And we're using federal funds, which always have a little more.
Well, and the delivery issue on the Ferguson says four to eight weeks. That's a big difference, three to five days. Well, that's what I'm concerned about. If everybody else is saying, you know, four to eight, 12 weeks, unless they've got these sitting in a warehouse somewhere, they're not going to do this in three to five days.
I think that's what three to five days means, that it's sitting in a warehouse.
My guess is that's what they have. And if that's the truth, then that makes sense. And again, also it's some federal monies too. We have to.
Yeah.
Quite as much leeway.
And, and we've done and will do a lot of, a lot of business with, uh, Ferguson. I don't, I don't think we're going to hurt their feelings necessarily, you know.
Well, and you'll know in three, five days.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll know pretty quick.
Right. And it's a little bit of an aside. I'm not, I'm not trying to get away from that question, but, um. The, the reasoning behind this is there's a lot of funding available, which is a good thing, but also maintenance identified. These 13 units, one already failed at, at Holson Bank.
Yep.
And we just don't want to find ourselves in an emergency position and then having to pay a premium and being, you know, at risk of not getting something. We're trying to get ahead of this. Buy them. We can install them ourselves and, and get some of these schools that have some older units, um, in a, in a better position. But I know that's, that doesn't have anything to do with what you're asking.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it as long as we've worked through this process and, and there's a legitimate reason and we've got a backup. Cause I, you know, we have been put in positions where we accepted bids that were the low bids and had great promises made. And then we had to go to plan B.
Well, I think it would be different if they were saying four to eight weeks. Ferguson was saying three to five days. That'd be a different.
Yeah, be different.
Equation.
Consent again?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yep. One more, Joe.
Yes, sir. Okay. As we go through and we've got a checklist of all of our projects with the state and it's a spreadsheet and we've got. Um, Bassa and Westside and Yargo and Auburn and Holson Bank. And you all know the, the list of projects we've, we've been doing. And some of these things we just, you know, hey, we never got the closeout, uh, resolution for the, the work we did at Kennedy's Cooler and Freezer two summers ago. You know, it, it just, the process of going through and reviewing these other things, we, that, that stood out at us. So this is sort of a, a housekeeping item, if you will. Um, but we're asking for our recommendation. Is that we. Initiate the final closeout certification of the Kennedy Elementary School Cooler Freezer Replacement Project that was done in the summer of 2019. That will allow us to grab our last 10%, which is actually 10% of that, that number shown on the financial impact there. To, uh, to get the last 10% of that to, uh, from the state. So it's 10% of 54,000. Yes. Okay. Consent agenda?
Yes.
Thank you, Joe. You did all the heavy lifting tonight, Joe. You did all the heavy lifting tonight. The Joe Show.
Okay, we'll authorize committees for, uh, next week. Um, Clean School, Jordan's working on January, Ricky, uh, February. Teacher of the Year, Megan's working on that already. So, um, Vince, Beverly Lynn, y'all want to participate again?
Sure.
All righty. Remove the executive session now. Discuss and deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, dismissal, or periodic evaluation of rating of a public officer or employee. Or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent.
Yes.
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 Yes.